...Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This is the Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. If you need another meeting, you're at the wrong place. All right, I'd like to introduce our board tonight. We have, to your far right, Mr. Joe.
[inaudible]
Mr. Joe.
[inaudible]
Mr. Joe DiVino. To his right, we have Mr. Gary Kestenbaum. To his right, Mr. Kevin Abrams. Then we have Mr. Andrew Jacomaza. To my right, your far left, is Mr. Michael Donnelly, our attorney. Our secretary, recording secretary, is Jessica McLennan, and I'm Karen Unger, chairperson. Our next meeting is April 11th. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. Before I do anything on the agenda here, I want to make an announcement that the Shops of Woodbury, if you're here for that, that has been postponed until next month, so that will not be on the agenda, although if there's anyone here to speak, since it's on the agenda, you will be allowed to speak. And the Osweiler application has been withdrawn, so there will be no public hearing on that application, so if you're here for that, it's, there is no application for that any longer. All right. On the agenda, we have an executive session, which we are not going to have. Did everyone read the minutes from February 14th?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the approval and acceptance of those minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes have been approved. No new business. We have action on decisions. The first one is the Crosby decision. This is to review a decision for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high solid vinyl stockade fence in a side yard, where as pursuant to Village Code, Section 146-5B, a maximum of four-foot high is permitted. Said property is located in the HB zoning district at 531 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 219, Block 5, Lot 9. After the public hearing closed, after several pages of findings, the decision is as follows. In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law, Section 7-712B/C, the board hereby grants the variance as requested upon the following conditions. One, this approval is not granted in a vacuum, but is rather one of two independent yet interconnected approvals, the other being within the jurisdiction of the village building inspector. As such, this grant of variance is conditioned upon approval of the proposed fence plans by the Village of Woodbury Building Inspector. And number two, this application is not decided in a vacuum, but is rather, as noted above, tied to a specific application for approval of a permit pending before the office of the building inspector. Therefore, this approval is conditioned upon the applicant diligently pursuing his application before that official. This grant of variance, unless extended, shall expire if a permit for the proposed fence is not obtained by the applicant within 90 days from the date of the decision. Do I have a motion to adopt the decision?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the decision, the variance has been granted. Okay, next on the agenda is the Patterson-Hunter decision, action. Review a decision for a special permit to permit the continued use of a second dwelling unit for an individual family member's mother, daughter pursuant to Section 310-35 of the Village Code. Said property is located in the R3A zoning district at 1155 Route 32 in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 201, Block 1, Lot 26. And once again, after several pages of findings, the decision is as follows. Now therefore, the Zoning Board of Appeals resolves to issue this special permit as said proposal is described within the application packet and upon the conditions outlined below. One, this approval shall remain subject to the requirements and limits of Section 310-35 and shall authorize occupancy of the additional dwelling unit for the use of family members of the applicants only to wit. Shaun J. Patterson, Dana Downs, Don Traddis Downs, Chase Williams, and Jared Patterson. Two, in the event the property is either sold or the additional unit is vacated, this permit shall immediately become null and void. In such case, the property shall be restored to its original single-family status and any permanent cooking facilities, for example, a stove, shall be removed. Number three, pursuant to Section 310-45H, this special permit shall be valid for a period of one year from date of issuance and shall be subject to annual renewal thereafter. The building department shall inspect the premises on an annual basis prior to expiration of each renewed term of this special permit. Should the building department find the applicant in full compliance with the provisions of this special permit, then, provided that no other complaint or irregularity has come to the attention of the village, renewal of this permit shall, in each such year, be automatic and shall be accompanied without need for a public hearing. Should any noncompliance be found by the building department, or should any significant complaint or irregularity have come to the attention of the village, then the matter shall be brought on for public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals, at which time said board shall rule upon the application for renewal. Number four, this approval does not authorize any additional construction activities. General conditions, this approval is conditioned upon the applicant delivering, prior to signing of the plat, proof in writing that all fees and expenses, engineering, zoning, legal and otherwise, owed to the village for the special permit application have been fully paid. A failure to comply with any such condition in a timely manner shall result, without further action, in a lapsing of this approval. The applicant did not submit a short environmental form, so I think if we approve this decision, we have to-
You need a short environmental form on a mother-daughter?
Supposed to be-
Yeah, it is, it is.
Because there was none on the previous application.
Unlike most of your variance applications.
I'd like to make a motion, will you accept this?
Oh, yes, but do we need to condition it on the-
It's a mother-daughter, that's been into effect, I don't-
The applicant said he'll deliver it. I'm just suggesting we condition the approval, which you should grant, upon delivery of that EAF before the occupancy is allowed.
How do you, do I have a motion to accept the decision with that condition, constraint?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All right, Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, so the decision is approved based on the acceptance of the EAF. Is there anyone here for the Shops of Woodbury who wanted to speak? Okay, that application has been, that public hearing is, will be next month, so if you or know anyone who wants to speak to them, speak to it, it will be in April, on April 11th. The Osweiler application, which is next on the agenda, has been withdrawn, so there is no public hearing.
Karen, I have a quick question.
Sure.
We had an open public hearing on it, do we need to close that?
What?
Procedurally?
I don't know.
Yeah, probably a good idea, I didn't realize we had left it open. A motion to close in view of the withdrawal of the application.
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for Osweiler based on the fact that the applicant withdrew his application?
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that takes care of that. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the Highland Lakes Estates Homeowners Association public hearing for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high chain-link fence along the northwest property line. Pursuant to Section 146-5A and B, a six-foot-high fence is only permitted in a rear yard. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district within the Highland Lakes Estates subdivision and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 245, Block 1, Lot 179. I understand you're requesting a chain-link fence for security reasons. Is the applicant, applicant is present? Would you please?
I'm present, ma'am.
Yes, would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Christopher Parino. I am a vice president of the HLE Board of Directors. This is President Carmine Mastrogiacoomo. Don't ask me to spell it.
Don't ask me to say it. Okay. Can you, can you describe exactly what's the problem that you're having that you, that you need a six-foot fence?
It's not a problem. What we're doing is, is we're getting our community, so we want, we're getting to front of it, so we feel that we would like to put a fence up along the back boundary lines of our property, which in turn would, it's just a fence. We're putting a fence on the back boundary lines for security reasons.
Because in your application, you state that people are walking through and driving through.
We do have certain locations that people do walk through, through Renana Park, or they through Dartmouth, or even through the woods for that matter.
And where are they going?
They walk through our development to places unknown. I don't know where they're walking to, to be honest with you, ma'am.
So they're leaving the development, they're coming in?
They use our development to cut through, yes.
So they're coming from the outside, going through the development to somewhere else?
They'll either go north to south or south to north, up Dartmouth or through the woods. They're, they're cutting, using our development to cut through from one, or one or two other developments to, through our development to Ridge Road. We also get people that park in these locations and then walk into the woods for whatever reasons they're walking into the woods.
Why do you need a six-foot-high fence? Why not a four-foot?
I went under by the guidance of the building inspector at the time. Four-foot fence wouldn't really deter anything. Pretty much anybody can jump over a four-foot fence.
You don't think they could jump over a six-foot?
I don't think somebody can jump over a six-foot.
You can't. Kevin-
Well, almost anybody.
Kevin, for the record, just said he could not jump over a four-foot fence.
Most people might not be able to. I went by the guidance of what the building inspector said. I thought, I looked at the paperwork for residential, I believe you're allowed up to a six-foot. I went by the paperwork by a commercial business, I think you're allowed up to six-foot, so I requested a six-foot fence. I thought that would overall be a better fence to put up.
Okay. Any comments from the board, questions?
I have.
Joe?
Gentlemen, I believe at one time Highland Lake Estates roads were private roads. Is this still the case?
Yes, sir, it's private roads.
So everything within this is, is private, owned by you, and it's, it's not public domain-like?
Yes, sir, it is all private, owned by us. It's all private green space that belongs to Highland Lake Estates.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
What, what yard is this fence in? It's not in the rear yard?
It's the rear boundary yard. I think I left cut sheets for you, and I also have a plot plan of the entire development, if you would like to see it.
No, I'm just wondering, isn't a six-foot fence allowed in a rear yard?
I believe they, I believe it is.
So what's the reason for the variance?
I went by the guidance of the building inspector. He said to me that I don't believe it was ever done before, because this is an HOA and it's, it's homeowners association property. He said you're gonna need a variance, so I was like, yes, sir, and I, here I am before you.
Yeah, I had the same feeling. I drove through, you know, I went up University, I went to Dartmouth, I went all around, and everywhere there's a cul-de-sac, it's, the houses are facing the street, of course, and the fence would be behind those homes.
Yes, ma'am. All the fencing that I'm requesting is gonna be deep, not deep, but into the woods, way away from person, people's property lines. I even assured a few of the neighbors in the other development, as well as our development, that I would do my very best to leave the fence into the tree line, where it's not an eyesore for anybody, which predominantly, 90% of that fence is gonna be deep in the woods, you wouldn't see it anyway. Because our property goes beyond their property lines.
So you're saying that the building inspector wanted clarification as to whether the same entitlement of a six-foot fence than an individual or a business would have extends to a homeowners association?
That's correct, sir. He wasn't sure if he, if one, if you, how, yes, sir, that's correct. That's how he explained it.
Throwing the towel.
I wasn't gonna go any further with the, with the counselor's definition of that, that's correct, sir.
Mike, do you have thoughts on it?
I don't see any reason why a HOA should be treated any differently than a corporation, a partnership, or an individual. And if this is truly a fence in the rear yard, a six-foot fence is permitted in the rear yard. It's more the nature, I think, of an interpretation than it is a request for a variance. Unless I'm missing something.
No, I would tend to agree, because if you look, even if you look at the map, I couldn't figure out where the front yard or side yard would be on any of these homes, on any of these streets.
Whose property is behind this?
It's a, one part is Renana Park, mostly Renana Park, the other part is just all wooded area. I do not know who owns that property.
That's the wood.
And part of it is to Hill Avenue, which I believe is another private road. So basically, you would be leaving a private road and crossing over another private road before you would get to a town or county road.
Any other comments from the board at this point?
Karen, if we go in the, if we go the route of not entertaining a variance, because Mike doesn't think it's necessary, does that leave the applicant in the lurch?
Well, I would suggest we should write a decision that, if, if what I'm hearing is correct, that advises Gary that you interpret the code as not prohibiting such a fence merely because it's an HOA ownership.
And that's binding?
Oh, I think your interpretation of what the code means. I just, the only confusing part would come if Gary had also determined that this was not a rear yard, then the applicant would have to come back, but it doesn't appear to be anything other than a rear yard, and we're hearing that the issue was whether an HOA has the same right to build a fence as an individual. And I think we can interpret it by saying, at least in my recommendation to you, that I see no reason why an HOA shouldn't be permitted to do what an individual can do.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone in the first row who would like to speak to this? Yes, please state your name for the record when you come, and address your concerns to the board.
Good evening. My name is Diane Gentile, and this is my husband, Thomas. We live at 12 Columbia Circle in Highland Mills. I'd first like to say that tonight we are here to ask the zoning board not to approve the variance sought by Highland Lake Estates Homeowners Board. I'd also like to disclose to the Highland Lake Estate, I would also like to disclose that the Highland Lake Estates Homeowners Association is suing me, and I have filed a counter suit. I have also served on the Board of Highland Lake Estates for six years. I just wanted that out in the open before I said anything. My husband and I moved here from Queens in June of 1996. We initially came here in October of 1995 with looking at several homes that we found advertised in the Daily News. We stopped at Highland Lake Estates first and never looked at anything else. We picked out our lot because of the privacy that it offered. The purchase price of our home was $5,000 more than the same model in my circle due to the privacy factor. We were told that there would be nothing built between our home and the open space to the left of our home, that's between us and Rahana Park. When we moved into our home, our yard had many overgrown reeds, weeds, and shrubs and stuff. We hired a landscaper to move them, to remove them. We planned to put in nice-looking bushes. While one day in our yard, we were approached by Helen Hamlin, the president of Rahana Park at the time, their recreation area, and our yard abut each other. She was worried that we would destroy the natural border between our two properties. We explained that we'd be planting more desirable shrubs between us. We didn't know the deer loved arachnoides. Like I said, we were from Queens. Shortly after our conversation, we received a nice letter in the mail from Helen, and since I'm a hoarder, I have the original. It said, "Dear Tom, I want to say again how glad I am that we had the opportunity to meet and talk about the buffer zone last Sunday. As I said, we at Rahana Park are eager to promote and maintain a neighborly relationship with you and other homeowners in your development. I'm sure you reciprocate. Please feel free to call me about any questions that may arise. Sincerely, Helen. Since that time, I've enjoyed the privacy and the beauty this buffer has provided. I put up a four-fence yard around my yard-"
Four-foot fence.
"-four-foot fence around my yard and planted forcindias next to them, so as to hide the fence." You know, I have a kid, you know, you wanna keep your kids in the yard. I sit on my deck as much as I can to enjoy the view. I love to watch the deer walk through this area, even though they ate everything I planted. The applicant states that the fence will be setback and not sightly to residents. I have pictures showing that the fence will be visible to me and other residents. Another objection is the wildlife. Has an environmental study been conducted for this fence? Yesterday, I'm out there shoveling, and I see a deer at the end of my road comes walking through the middle and right through this area into Rahana. We see it all the time. What happens when the mama deer jumps over the six-foot fence and the baby deer is behind it? I think deer can jump pretty high, as evidence what's in my yard. Also, I'd like to say, I've lived here for almost 22, 22 years. In those 22 years, I can honestly say I have never seen anyone from Rahana Park walk through those woods and into Highland Lake Estates. I've lived there, my yard is there. Actually, it's quite the opposite. We used to see, every once in a while, some kids walk through, go to Rahana Park, play a little tennis, and then leave. And I have never seen a vehicle drive through this. I believe the applicant wrote down that, to keep cars off. Putting a fence of any size where proposed will definitely change the character of this neighborhood. I feel it'll be unsightly and a huge physical and environmental impact on the neighborhood. This fencing is not consistent with the predominant character of the development. It also appears that there's wetlands in the back next to it. The applicant said that this fence will solve security problem. I thought that's what the gates were supposed to do. I didn't move to a rural community only to be enclosed by gates and fences. There are already cameras at our entrances watching every person come in and out of Highland Lake Estates, including the residents. I not only strongly oppose the variance asked for, but a fence of any kind. And I do have pictures showing that this fence is right up against my property, where I can see it. And I have the, the Google map pictures showing that I can see this when I walk out of my house. So if you want those, if you want a copy of the let, the handwritten letter dated June 10th, 1997, from Rahana Park, explaining about the buffer, and do you know of anything that when this development was in plans, that there was a buffer zone discussed? Because that's what we were told when we bought the house, that nothing was going there, and that was a natural buffer zone, not to be touched.
That's what Helen told us back in 97, and then she wrote us the letter thanking us for, you know.
So I have pictures showing where the fence is going, that's not deep into the woods, that you can see it from my house. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Andre Davis. I live at 16 Fordham Lane, and as regards to the building of the fence, I can say for a certain, I've seen persons walk in the green area behind my house. I have three boys, they're outside there now, and it's a concern to me. Just for security, for security purposes, I, I, I would approve, and I'm here to, you know, voice my support for, for this fence. These persons, I don't know these individuals, and the, the wooded area goes, you know, way back. I can't identify these individuals. At this time, I don't have cameras at the back of my house, I have cameras at the front, but then it still can't, I mean, I'm not there 24/7 to, to guard my property.
Second row?
I have a question.
Come up and state your name, please.
My name's John Prictoe, P-R-I-C-T-O-E, and I didn't come here for this, but, but is this, is this fence going to actually cut off Dartmouth from Hill? I live on Jefferson Street, I live on 27 Jefferson, and I know there's people come in and out that way. It's two-way traffic, as far as I, I can tell. Is the fence going to be, is, it's not really a rear yard, is it? It's just a sort of open pit of land there, on that dividing line. Is, is the fence going through there, and it's gonna block that, I guess we'll call it a walk-through between Hill and Dartmouth?
I don't know where the walk-through is, but Hill is, this, this fence looks like it's perpendicular to Hill.
Perpendicular, not, not parallel with?
Correct.
Okay. Will people still be able to walk through there?
I think the purpose is so that people don't walk through there, from what, from what the applicant has said. They don't want people to be walking through there.
Okay. All right, now, let's add a query on that. I hadn't heard about this.
Thank you. Second row, anybody else? Third row? Fourth? Fifth? Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Kevin Watson, and I live on Hill Avenue. I'm not specifically opposed to the fence, I'm just really unclear as to, they state that the fence is supposed to go up to protect security reasons. If you're gonna put a fence up along your north side, your northwest side, it, it ends, according to their survey, their stake of their property ends on the corner of my property. Actually, within what I think is my property now, however, I guess if I have to get a survey, I'll get one. My concern with living on Hill Avenue is, where am I supposed to plow the snow? Hill Avenue's a private road. We have a neighbor, and myself are good enough to plow the road for everybody that's on it. We normally plow it down, okay, towards, towards what would be Dartmouth, or we plow it onto the side. We can't plow it onto Jefferson, 'cause that's a public road, and you're not allowed to do that. I was also under the understanding, when I bought the house, that Hill Avenue was a private road, Highland Lake Estate was within that back area, was supposed to be a crash gate, a secondary access in case there was ever an issue on Ridge, the fire department, or other municipal services couldn't get up there. I will also say that I've lived up there since 98, and I've had numerous permits for everything from solar panels to decks built, retaining walls, drainage ditches. I don't think that, I don't necessarily, I don't, I'm challenging their survey, but I don't really think it's correct, and if I have to get my own, I will. All right? But I do have a concern about, now where am I supposed to put this snow? Is this emergency crash gate gonna be put in, like it was, was stated when PCK Homes originally put in Highland Lake Estates? I have those concerns, also from my own observation, and I would tend to think that my professional career would show that I have a little bit better observation than the average person, okay? I don't see a tremendous amount of foot traffic. What I see is people from Highland Lake Estates walking over to our reservoir, and then maybe perhaps back, all right? There is large stones that were put up there by the village water department. They did a, a new water pump station that came downhill from the, from the water towers, I'm sorry, with the water tank at Fillmore, came straight downhill and went over to Dartmouth. I believe that's village and/or town property. They put large stones. Nobody drives through there. It's physically impossible, whether it be by a quad or a car. You could get a motorcycle or a dirt bike through there, but that's it. I do have pictures of that, and I'll be more than happy to give that to you. These are my concerns, and if your concerns are security, when will they put a fence around the entire neighborhood? Because if they put the fence where it is now, and just like you had said, it looks like it just kinda stops, they're just gonna walk down that fence, and they're gonna walk around it. And guess whose property they'll be walking on? So these are my concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chief, before you leave, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You made the statement that you don't think their survey is accurate. Were you referring to this document?
I'm not, I'm not, what I'm not, what I'm not clear on is, is, living up there for as long as I have and knowing where the property markers were, appeared they were, from the time I moved in, there is now a stake on what would be, I wanna say, inside the corner of my property, 20 feet down, and probably a foot in from the, the rock wall. That was an existing rock wall that was there when I was there. I'm, I'm just not sure, I'm unclear. Now, if you can put a fence, six-foot-high or four-foot-high, six inches from someone's property line, and their homeowners assured, they have assured me that they wouldn't do that, okay? And, and I like to believe them, but my concern is whether or not you move it back 10 feet off my property, you put it right where it belongs, six inches. Someone wants to go around that fence, they're gonna go around it. So if you're not gonna fence off the entire property, then I think this is, you know, it's moot at this point. Because if you do have, if you do have, you know, traffic and people are walking, if you have foot traffic, they're gonna go around that fence, and now I'm gonna have, if, if there is, which I'm telling you it's limited, they're gonna be walking on my property.
But the, your comment regarding the survey-
Right.
-referred to the staking that was done.
Exactly.
The physical staking, not any documents that we have, that's-
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone in the last row? Could the applicant go to, I have a few questions on the environmental form that you filled Map of boundaries, stakeout for a portion of Highland Lake Estates at Dartmouth Road. We cannot consider this tonight, because we don't-
Okay.
You know, we haven't, but we'll, you know-
Those are the surveys that they're talking about, so it's no problem.
All right, you can give that to the building department and as a matter of record. On your sure environmental assessment form.
Yes, ma'am.
There are some, you know, it asks, you know, pretty generic questions for any application. But on one page, it says, check all land uses that occur on adjoining and near the proposed action. And you put forest, parkland, and rural. What parkland are you referring to?
It is, we have parkland. It's our parkland.
Okay.
We have wetlands behind, we have a lake there, Saltzman Lake.
Right, I saw that on the map.
And we have, that's our parkland. It's green space that was dedicated to the community when the development was proposed back in 95. Okay? To answer one of the questions that the chief just, Kevin, Mr. Watson just brought up, is that the north part of our community is open to other communities and other woods and other properties like Renana. Our south part of our community is the bottom of Ridge Road. It's a tree-lined area, plenty of traffic, plenty of people coming and going. So if something happened on that road, I'm sure you would see it happen. The east side of our road borders Route 105. And I don't know if you've ever driven up Route 105 and looked up to where the water plant and everything is. It's a very, very steep incline. You'd have to be a billy goat to get up that side. The west side of our property comes all the way down towards the remaining part of Ridge Road where it bends over there. Renana Park is all a private property. I don't know who comes through Renana Park. It doesn't concern me. The property lines, nobody can be promised that nothing's ever going to be built on that property, because the property belongs to the homeowners association. And technically, it, building meaning, you can't put a building up on it, you can't put a structure with a foundation, something to that nature. It's green space, okay? I said 90% of the fence would be into the woods. That's correct. It might come close to a few homeowners' properties where it would be 20 to 30 feet off. But most of it is going to be into the woods. Now, what Mr. Watson is speaking about, I understand what the issue is there. At the bottom of, at the end of Hill Avenue, there's a makeshift cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac belongs to the HOA, okay? The survey that I'm holding here and will submit, so you guys can see it later, and I'll give the chief, Mr. Watson, a copy right now. The issue here is, is in order for us to get our survey, and the development was built in 95, things weren't looked at correctly from then to now. So some of the property lines are off, absolutely. Ours aren't. I paid for a survey, okay? Steve Drabek came out and did a survey of our lot lines. So I know exactly where my fence can and cannot go. In the Hill Avenue area, they need a place to push the snow. I spoke to Mr. Watson about this. I said, no problem. I'll set it back further on our property so you have a place to push your snow. I don't have to. I said I would do that for him because I'm being neighborly. Our lot lines were found by their property lines. He had to go off of, I think it's Wiggitt and Hill Avenue to find our back boundary lines. So this is very accurate. I'll give him a copy if he would like it. Now, if his wall or shed or whatnot is on our property, I'm not really concerned with it. The property belongs to us. I explained to him, we can prove it belongs to us, and I'm not looking to change it. I'll move the fence back for him. There is supposed to be a crash gate there. I checked that out with the fire department and the building department. I'll put up two eight-foot gates there, and we'll lock them, and I'll give the key or the combination to the fire department. And the way it was explained to me was, is that if they really needed to get through there, there's really no reason to get through there. It'll be over by then. That they can crash the gate, they can cut the lock, okay? The rocks that he's referring to there were placed there, not by the building department, I mean, the water department, because I've been living there a lot longer than Chief, Mr. Watson's been living there. Those rocks were put there because cars were driving through it. There was another area down by the water department shed that they were driving into the development off of 105, and there was a gate put up and logs put across it, so they couldn't drive up that way. Not the water department, anybody with a truck who wants to drive through the back way, okay? Our property has a very large buffer.
Who installed the rocks and the logs?
The logs and the rocks were installed by the builder and the developer at the time.
Highland Lake Estate?
Yes, sir, it was, at the time, before the homeowners' association took it over from the developer. I know that for a fact because I live on the street where the rocks were placed. Matter of fact, I think I helped some of them put the rocks there. It's going way back. It's 20 years. I will put a crash gate there for emergency personnel for the fire, give the key to the fire department. The fire department use only, of course.
Is that the proposed emergency service gate that's
May I see that?
On the thing that we received?
Yes, sir. That's the approximate place where it's supposed to go, okay? You can see that little line right there. That's where the gate is. I have a bigger diagram if you guys want, if you guys would like to see it. Thank you. Yes, sir?
When you said eight-foot fence, I take it you mean width, not height?
Yes, sir, width. I'm going to put two eight-foot gates.
Two eight-foots.
That way you're going to have 16 feet to get any type of vehicle you want through there. And I'll be quite honest with you, if our development is on that kind of fire, I'm sure the fire department will just drive over whatever they need to drive over. And they would have our full permission to do that. Okay? As for the green life, and there's no reason to put gates completely around this community at this point, even though we're making an application for our boundary lines. We're starting at this location. It will be a phase, take phases to do this, okay?
Do you plan in the future to put fence around the entire community?
I don't think it's going to be necessary because of the inclines that are around this piece of property, the slopes. The slopes are so great that, you know, if need be, and down the road, I would reapply and then put a gate on the west side. I mean, a fence on the west side, or a fence on the east side, okay? I'm sure a lot of neighbors were notified about it, and I didn't really get too much resistance prior to filing for this.
Thank you.
Karen, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Carrie?
The area, the fencing area called out in yellow on our maps?
Yes, sir.
Are, does the homeowners' association characterize those as limited common elements or something else?
It's just green space on our property. That's all it is. I don't know what by limited means.
Well, common elements meaning in
It's common area. All of the green space is considered common area.
And the back, the yards per se are deeded, they're not common elements? Each individual homeowner's yard?
Each individual homeowner is different. They have their own yard, and it's theirs. The green space that we're talking about surrounds all the homes. Some of them, your back lots, some of them, your side lots. Those are green spaces. We're looking at the northernmost part of our property in the woods, okay?
Is there an, Mike, would it be appropriate for the president of the homeowners' association to have to provide either the zoning board or the town with a document showing what constitutes common elements and versus deeded elements?
Well, the town already has it. They're the ones that designed it.
That's correct, sir.
I think they
Okay. They have to show that they own the land where the fence is to be erected, and the survey they've submitted shows that.
Just to validate the fact that in a dispute situation, it is their property, and it is common element versus, just affirming that is all I'm saying. To your point, Kevin, if
They've actually got, they've actually got driveways for houses on the common area in that development. That whole development was terribly designed. But that was way before
I guess what I'm saying is, though, you and I wouldn't know exactly what the common elements were.
But I wouldn't be up there.
Unless, unless we had
But why would I be up there? Why don't need to know?
No, as a zoning board member. Verification that any permission you give the gentleman.
Gary, there may be issues in the HOA bylaws or in the offering plan
That's up to them.
that limits the use, and that may create a private grievance as between individual homeowners and the HOA.
But if this is all
But I think the survey shows that they own this land.
And
As owners, the code allows erection of a fence.
If you're satisfied, I'm satisfied.
If it's rear yard, then they don't need a variance anyhow.
Well, that was the next question, Mike. I wanted to ask you, how do you characterize this as rear yard versus
Well, look at the properties.
versus side yard?
Well, I don't have the yellow on my map, but it looks like, is it a straight line or it jags? About the only place that would be in doubt is the little jag line, whether that's a rear yard or not.
Yeah, my definition of rear yard, for example, would have been where you see the words "emergency gate." That, to me, would have been the rear of the property, and Ridge Road would have been the front of the property. But again, my interpretation doesn't matter. That's why I'm asking you.
It's an unusual, it's not like a house that has a front yard and a rear yard that's defined by access to the street. I don't think normally you'd think in terms of front and rear yards. But if they define this as a rear yard, then the other yards define themselves as a result as side or front yards. And I think it's logical to think of this as a rear yard, given the overall layout. And again, the only question is that little perpendicular piece that cuts back across. I don't know that that makes it a side yard or just an irregular rear yard.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? I'm over here. I'm sorry. I'm not going to get up right now. I just have a question because, Mike, I'm not sure if you were on the planning board at the time when this was done.
I believe I was.
I was sitting on the other side of the table. But I can't recall when this development was approved with Dartmouth and Hill Avenue. I don't know if there's an easement or something in the resolution that permits or doesn't permit a fence to be there, that there's access. So I haven't had time to review this in the village records, so.
I acknowledge that there may be issues of whether representations made in the offering plan restrict the ability to build this. But those are private matters as between those lot owners and the HOA. Similarly, if the planning board resolution of approval placed limits on this, Gary Thomasberger should be mindful of those when he issues or refuses to issue the fence permit. The only issue before this board was, as initially presented, can there be a six-foot fence? Or does a six-foot fence need the variance? Well, six-foot fence is permitted in a rear yard. And the question that this gentleman tells us Gary wanted answered is whether an HOA has the same authority to erect a fence permitted under the code as an individual would. Beyond that, there really isn't any issue for the zoning board. But I acknowledge there may be private issues, and there may be an issue for Gary as to whether the emergency accessway, any easement rights that were granted as part of the planning board approval are violated by the erection of the fence. But they're not, I don't think zoning board issues.
I don't think so either.
And I have a second question. I'm sorry, Mr. Abrams. When you said with the zigzag, I see the first one. Is there going to be a second zigzag around the Village of Woodbury property to Ridge Road? Because you're not going to go behind the Village of Woodbury property with Renana Park. I guess you're going to come
It looks like a straight line ending at Ridge Road.
But it can't be because it's village-owned property in the corner. It says Village of Woodbury owns that little corner lot, which I believe is the water
I can't really see it on my plan.
That's a little piece of fire property that they had against.
It's the fire property, but the way I'm looking at it, it's a corner, so there's going to be two zigzags, is what I'm looking, what I'm asking for the fence.
Wouldn't that be up to Gary?
I think that's going to be Gary's call.
So it's going to come out and it's going to
Or it may just end and not include that. The way it's proposed right now is a straight line, and I must admit, the yellow, if that's different ownership continues beyond their property line, they may not be able to build it in that location.
All right, because I would think the village eventually would have had something to say about cutting through their property, going directly to Ridge Road, or coming to the
Build a firehouse up there?
I have no idea.
Listen, I think that, I just think that if a six foot's allowed in a rear yard, I just don't think that, it's up to
The HOA.
The HOA's got to work this out with whoever's involved.
Well, I think that's what Mike is saying, right?
Yeah.
That if there's a problem with location of the fence, then it has to be between the homeowners' association and the individual homeowners.
Yeah, if it violates something in the offering plan, that's a private issue. I don't know, and I don't think it's for this board to look at.
No, I don't think so either.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more comments from the board? Do we have, you want to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Public hearing for the Highland Lakes Estate is now closed. We'll be discussing this at the end of the meeting. You're welcome to stay, or you can check back tomorrow with the building department. We don't have any jurisdiction on that, though. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearing. I hope I say this name right. Is it Kukerzik? I'll have you say it when you get up there. I'm so sorry. Public hearing for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high solid chain-link fence in a front yard pursuant to Section 146-5B and 146-7A. A six-foot-high solid fence is not permitted in a front yard. Said property is located in the R-3A zoning district at 1 Troutbrook Road in Highland Mills, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 201, Block 1, Lot 19.2. So you are requesting a six-foot solid chain-link fence for privacy, safety, and security purposes? Could you state your name and say it clearly so I can pronounce it?
My name is Bojanah Shostak Kuharcek, and we live on 1 Troutbrook Road. It's like that corner lot.
I don't think your microphone is on. Is the green light on?
Yeah, now it is.
Now it is, thank you.
My name is Kuharcek, and we live on 1 Troutbrook Road. This is that corner lot between 32 and Troutbrook.
All right. What kind of privacy issues are you referring to?
Because that's like the 32, private, and then a lot of times people are able to park their cars between, you know, in that corner between 32 and Troutbrook. There is
That little triangle on the corner there?
Little triangle. And like sometimes people don't even go to intersection. They cut through, which like I don't even mind it. But a lot of times people stay over there, and they like drinking coffee and stuff. And we concern about it. From Palaya Winery, like some people stop over to decide, listen to the radio. And I think they walking to our backyard over there, like use as a restroom sometimes. And we have like a lawn mower over there, a snow blower, stuff like that. And I think because it's more like that, even for us, if we like block it, would be nicer, and we would, you know, cover all this, it would be more privacy.
You submitted a photo of a fence with a, it's the fence that's there, that green, you know, to the left of your driveway?
Yeah, yeah. We put like artificial hedges into it.
How tall is that fence?
That's six, yeah.
Six foot. Now, how did you get that up? It's in the front yard. I mean, it's not allowed in the front yard, but you said
That's why we're here, because we were not aware of it. And when Gary drove by, he stopped over, and he said that we need to get regular permit for it. And that's we said, oh, we were not aware that we, I thought it's like, I wasn't considering this as a front of the land, because front is facing towards Troutbrook, and it's like on the corner. So I apologized and said, I'm going to come here, and I'm going to like apply for it.
So is that the fence that you plan to put from there all the way around the corner of the building?
Not all the way around, just around that corner and higher up towards the 32.
That's what I meant.
But there is like trout going, so I don't need to do anything over there, because nobody would be even able to walk over there. There's too much of a slope, and I don't think anybody would be trespassing that way. Just a little bit higher to cover up when we have those, when we have wood and stuff. One time, actually, I stopped coming from work, and somebody was taking wood. And I said, no, don't take that wood, because we have a fireplace, and we need it. And the lady said, but the one I have already in my hands, can you just let me take it? And I was like, so that's why I rather not have people walk that. And I think would look much nicer if we like covered that. So nobody like sees.
And this fence has no bearing on the town wells?
No, no.
There's no right-of-way or nothing from them in there?
No, no. Gary didn't, Gary said go, and because you should be fine. Just get the permit for it.
What is the, you have a bunch of
You know, I don't know if you noticed, but we tried to put like a fabric and stuff, but they go through fabric, they damage the fabric. You see that green fabric is like ripped over?
No, I'm talking about the merchandise that you have covered with tarps or canvas or something on 32 on the side of the property by 32.
That's wood, I think.
Is that wood?
That's the wood.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what was under there.
It's like wood for fireplace.
I was eyeing it myself.
Yeah.
We have like that wood split, lac splitter, and every season, we like making more wood for the season.
Now, in the spring and summer, when the leaves are on the trees and the bushes are full and whatever, how much?
Then it's nice, and everything is like covered. But I'm telling you, like, they're really stopping over there. One of the trees like about to collapse. It's not doing good. And once I stop and said to gentleman who was sitting over there, move your car, because I'm worried that the tree going to collapse and tap you. And he like consider and move his car, like they stopping over there.
So what, if you say six-foot solid, what kind of
No, it's the same thing. It's chain link, and we were planning on putting those artificial hedges inside.
Is anybody on the board of anything, any comments?
I mean, I have always seen cars and activity going on in the corner of the I mean, I have always seen cars and activity going on in the corner of that property.
Yeah, and you know what, like when we go, and I want to go, I work in Helen Hayes Hospital, like I'm going to Rockland, so I'm staying in the intersection trying to pass, and all of a sudden, somebody goes and goes to the other direction blocking my view, and it's like, before, before they did like construction over there, they were like stones and trees, and they end up cleaning, cutting that and opened the place even more.
Gary, you have something to say?
Karen, is your, is your concern the opacity of the green material on there versus the open chain link?
My concern is that I don't think aesthetically it's a nice-looking fence.
But it's going to be nice when we finish, when we put it at the green hedges, like right now doesn't look good, because we have tarb and we, but once we put it at fence with those artificial, it's going to be, it's going to look good.
Keep it simple.
You know what, Karen, if you want that, we can actually plant a little bit more pine trees over there to cover for you, so it's more aesthetic for you.
So why, why would only, why wouldn't a 50% solid fence be, be good? Why do you need solid?
No, it's not, it's chain link, I don't know what solid means, it's not solid, it's chain link.
Chain link is open and they're going to put bushes in it.
No, she put this thing.
No, they're putting that, it's almost like an artificial turf.
You know what, I can show you on my cell phone, because it's not how the.
Is this the picture?
I have a picture in my cell phone, that doesn't look like that, it's still artificial.
Oh, good. I didn't like this at all. I didn't want to say it. So you started to put the fence up, Gary drove by, saw it, and that's how you ended up here?
Yes, because, because I didn't, I didn't think he needs to get, I needed to get approved.
Okay. Anybody on the board?
I don't think I realized that, I think that's new news, so the fence is up?
No, there's only one, this little section is up.
There's a coil of it also up the.
Right, but this is the only part, in other words.
They didn't go fast enough.
Right.
It could have been worse if it had gotten.
Yes. It's got a beautiful gate across the driveway and all, and then I saw this green fence and I, just like a six-foot by six-foot section.
I really don't think it looks bad, because I don't like artificial things either. So this covers in the nature, that's why it's green.
So this.
But if you don't like that green, we can pull that out and just lift the chain.
So you're saying you would, you would be willing to do just a chain link fence without the solid?
Yes, without that, that's.
That looks all right.
Yeah, I don't think it looks bad.
That's not this, is it?
It is, it is.
No.
Look further down.
Yeah, the printer printed the contents.
No, but I drove by and it was green.
Did it look as dark, like?
No, it looked like this.
Army green?
It looked like this.
Look down here, it looks different.
I was like, whoa.
Looks more like bushes.
That's what I think.
But this part is only open.
And it's kind of, you can see the chain through there.
Yeah.
You can see the chain through there. Gary?
No, Karen, I do have a question, no.
Go ahead, Joe.
Sorry about that.
In that section, it deals with the fences. Thank you, thank you. It also says that, I mean, they're talking about just a cloth fence, but since this is a cloth honor fence, are we getting into the same thing?
Is that considered, I don't know if it's considered cloth, I don't know, you're right on that, when cloth fences are not allowed. Would this be considered a fabric of cloth?
I can tell what it's made of.
It's like a.
It's like an Astro. You know what, it's made like Christmas tree, you know, like Christmas tree that has that, that branches, so that's what.
It's like an artificial turf.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, yeah.
That's like that green stuff you would put like a carpet on a back deck or something like that, similar to that material.
Yeah.
Karen, to Joe's point, just in hearing what he said, I'm thinking that if the board approves a fence, then you approve either a simple language such as, I approve a chain link fence, or I approve a solid fence. In terms of the addition of decorations, if you will, to me, that's between the person who puts it up and the, and the code enforcement officer to determine if that's legal or not. For this board to get into, Maria, help me out, architectural review, I'm hesitant to do that.
Generally, you're correct, but what if they wanted to put neon lights on it, then that, under the factor of how it affects the character of the community, it might be important.
I guess what I'm saying, like.
You may want to flag for Gary that you questioned whether or not that material is permitted under the code provision that prohibits cloth material.
I'm just, I'm just arguing that.
What about the metal slats?
The approval would say a, a chain link fence.
You know, the weaving?
And in terms of any decoration on that chain link fence, I don't think this board should get involved with that one way or the other, whether it exists or not, that's just my opinion.
Would you guys be willing to put those, those metal slats in?
But like, why matter, what's in matter? Because I think this is better, I want to look more natural.
I know, but that, that green is sort of getting to.
Would you be willing to just put the chain link fence up and only the chain link fence, without the, the green tar or the green turf, whatever you want to call it?
Like, I thought that would look better, like would, because over the time it's going to fade it out, and it's, nobody going to be able to look through the fence, what we have over there, and.
There's also a problem, you're not supposed to have a front yard fence that is.
That's solid, right, it's supposed to be 50%.
You have a solid front yard fence all the way over to where your gate is, so that's another place where you're running up against the building code where it forbids you from doing that.
Right, we're basically looking at two things, the height and the.
Where comes the corner, where it runs down parallel to Troutbrook?
Yeah.
That cannot be closed in like that, it's not allowed.
It's only supposed to be 50%.
So what, so what, so now along 32 is okay, yeah? Along 32?
That's side yard.
That's side yard.
That side yard.
Yes.
No, because, right, right, right.
Yeah, really, it could only be 50% by zoning law.
Well, that's why we're here.
Okay, so you want me to pull those, pull those things out now, yeah?
I guess the question is, if you put up a, if a six-foot, if we allow a six-foot fence on that stretch of property?
Yeah.
Where only a four-foot fence is allowed, and you want to have also not only six-foot, but you want it to be solid, where only 50% of it is allowed to be solid?
Okay, so.
Would you be willing to do just a six-foot fence?
Yeah, I'm going to pull.
Like a chain link fence?
Yes, I'm going to pull that thing out, pull these things out of it.
And then. All right, does anybody have a question, any comments on that? If, if we approve, you know, what? Yeah, but that was a little piece of, and it was for a safety issue with the drunks going on.
That's a safety issue for?
Yeah, like they, they.
And I have nothing against, what you call it, the six-foot fence, it's solid.
It also wasn't a front yard fence right up against the road with the driveway and so forth.
Yeah. All right, well, we can discuss that after we close public hearing, right?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the first row? Second, second row, anybody to say anything about this application? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth? And last row? Okay, do I have a motion to, oh.
Karen, is there a good for number of miles left to speak?
Sure.
You want to, you want to speak before me? You want to speak before me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I snuck up here. My name is Maria Hunter, for the record. As a resident that lives on Route 32 for the last 39 years, I can sympathize with the applicant wanting to protect their property from someone stealing wood from them, protecting their property, and putting a chain link fence is a solid object. You're looking at a six-foot variance here for a solid chain link fence. Chain link fence, you can look through it, but it's a solid structure. This is what you're here for. It's your determination, 32 is their side yard, I'm sorry. Troutbrook is their front yard. So you have, and I did notice the fence was up there, they have the fence in front of their driveway, I don't know how it got there, but that's, that's a different fence there. But to protect their property, I'm all for that, because when you live on Route 32, and when you have people who are coming from the winery or young adults who want to stop on the side of the road or cut through, there's a safety issue there. And it should be looked at as a safety issue for the, for the resident of the Village of Woodbury, and to protect them from other people doing damage to their property and stealing. But that's my feeling as a resident who has lived on 32, because I've had to protect my property as well, as best I can. So I sympathize with the applicant wanting a safety feature, and if they have guests there, or, you know, you just can't, and it's on the north end of town, yes, there are other residents there on the corner across the street from them, but it's at the north end of town. People are, it's not like we're in the middle of Highland Lake Estates, or right in the middle of Jones Drive where it's going to be that noticeable. People are doing 55 miles an hour down there, they're not looking at the fence, they're looking at their road and they're watching coming down the hill or going up the hill. And there are a lot of deer down there, children and cars, but that's my feeling on the fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flood?
Tom Flood, 12 Van Buren. First of all, I love your property, you did a nice job down there with your project, looks great. I agree with them, they need some protection. We do border that, we have our village wells right there, so I will talk to the mayor to find out whether or not we can get a sign up, no parking, it might be appropriate. It's used at times as a staging area by trucks and others that probably shouldn't be there, so it's kind of been a.
You're talking about that little triangles piece that's on the, on Troutbrook?
To the left of their property is a, is a dirt road into a paved road into our wells, so at times it uses staging area, probably by no permission of anyone, so it's kind of like a no man's land there, so I think it does warrant a fence, it makes sense to do that. However aesthetically you all agree to, that would be great, you know, but I, I think that would be good. I was worried about your wood, I'll be honest, I saw it, I don't have a fireplace.
He was eyeing it too.
I burned gas, but, but I knew that you worked hard on it, and, you know, they've been working on that property for a while, and if you notice, that side of town, there's been a lot of improvements between the winery, a couple houses across the street on 32, so it's really shaping up. I see a fence would, would make sense and give them privacy they need, and I do think maybe as the village, we can take some actions possibly to put a sign up or something, so I can suggest that to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Flood, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Who actually has that piece of property?
Good question.
It used to be a roadbed there at one time.
Yeah, and it might be part of Green Space, that was part of another project that didn't happen, and it might have been owned by Green Space, Maria? She's looking it up. So it might be owned by another group, originally there was going to be a housing development further down on Troutbrook, and I think when that, it didn't make sense to go forward with that development, I think they made that into a Green Space and it was, you know, given over to a non-for-profit or something. So it's kind of a weird piece, I'm not sure how that jogs out there, I don't know if it's, you know, private property, part of the Green Space, or whether or not it's part of village property, because it, we, it kind of.
Somewhere is in my documents, I think for this property, it said nature conservancy.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
I don't know if it's that particular.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a non-for-profit for sure that part of that went over to, so it would make sense that we kind of clean that up for them, give them protection, it's true, the winery at times is an overflow, so it would make sense, plus you don't want any, you know, people who are hiking or whatever get the impression that that's public property or anything like, like that, so I think it's a good idea, so. Any other questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have a motion to close public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. We will discuss this at the end, you can stay for the discussion, or you can call tomorrow to see what the decision was, okay? Next on the agenda is Woodview Heights slash 39 MLLC, public hearing for an area variance pursuant to section 310-21C. The definition of lot area requires steep slopes deducted from the overall lot area calculations in the number of lots that may be approved. The applicant is seeking approval for a 14-lot subdivision, Woodview Heights, and is requesting that the steep slopes not be deducted from the lot area requirements, which would reduce the overall lot count of the proposed subdivision. Said property is located in the R-1A zoning district at the corner of Hill Avenue and Van Buren Court in Highland Mills, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 204, block 1, lot 34. So the applicant's requiring a waiver from the slope deduction of the overall lot area calculation for a proposed 14-lot subdivision, which originally was a 15-lot subdivision. Is the applicant here? Yes, I see you.
Good evening, my name is Jay Mauro, I'm an attorney with Blue Steen Shapiro Rich and Barone, Goshen, New York, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm here with John Locke, who's an engineer with AFR Engineering, he's the project engineer, and thank you for having us tonight. This matter is a referral from the planning board. This project goes back to 1995, and the vehicle that got us here tonight was, in 1995, this project was approved as a 15-lot residential subdivision, and it was anticipated at the time that the project would be serviced by public water and sewer, and there was no sewer available at the time. In 1995, the planning board issued a negative declaration under Seeker and granted preliminary approval of the project in its 15-lot configuration. That approval was continuously affirmed and extended through, I believe I was here in December, planning board in December, was that when it was?
Six December 2017.
Of 2017?
Yes, my first appearance on this matter was in December 2017, requesting an additional extension. We.
What exactly were the extensions for?
Well, the preliminary approval, the preliminary approval was only good for, I believe, six months, Mike, if I'm not mistaken, typically.
Generally, they're granted in, in six-month intervals, I wasn't there, so I don't know.
Since 1995.
So that's like 46 extensions?
A lot of extensions.
When you have a preliminary approval, Madam Chair, the applicant can come in and we can grant them extensions with extenuating circumstances, and there have been circumstances with sewer capacity and everything up there, so this property for the last 21-plus years have been given extensions, whether it be six months or 12 months, so it has been going on for that long.
And basically for sewer and water?
I believe, yes, that's what it was until Mr. Lippman, and then Mr. Mauro has it now, so.
So.
Is it the same owner as 1995?
Different owners, that's my question now, different owners?
I can, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you the historical data for ownership. In 1989, ASL Corporation bought the property that was Mr. Lippman's corporation, bought it from Adler, I believe it was a trust. In the same year, ASL Corporation, Alan transferred it from his corporation to himself individually. He owned it individually from 89 to 2013, at which time he sold the property to Pat Covielo's estate. Covielo Estate owned it to December of 2016, when it was sold to my client at 39 MLLC. So at that point, I believe Mr. Locke had come in without me after 39 MLLC purchased it, I think he had gotten at least one or two other approvals before I showed up in December. So I showed up in December and basically said, listen, we acknowledge where the property stands. "Listen, we acknowledge where the property stands today based on the current zoning as opposed to what was approved in 1995." So the one thing we knew that was going to happen was that back in 95, there were no, the stormwater regulations were not in place. You didn't have to do a SWIP. It wasn't an MS4 designation for the town at the time. Those regulations have since come in. "We know that we have to amend the plan to conform to the stormwater, so we're going to, we know we're going to lose one lot."
Do you know which one?
We're not pos... John, I think you have an idea?
In all likelihood, it would be Lot 3.
So your client bought the property after the laws were changed in regards to slopes?
Yes. My client also bought it, though, with the belief that his extensions were all lined up and in place and had some rights based on that.
Ah, you know what happens when you assume.
You're speaking of vested rights? We're here because we're looking for a variance from the current regulations.
How many lots can you get if you have to, if you don't get this variance?
If we don't get this, the maximum we would get would be 11, max. And we haven't been able to do the full layout, but the maximum we would get would be 11.
So you're only losing three?
Well, we're losing a total of four from the original 15. Here's the problem, though. This is a fairly extensive road system that's going to go in. There's a lot of infrastructure for this project. Because of the wetland constraints and some of the other constraints on the property, we can't alter that road system. Are you relatively certain of that?
Not in meet the criteria that the planning board was looking for at the time, which was basically creating a through road that connected from Fillmore Court.
To the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Back out and also minimal amount of wetland disturbance.
When you say minimal, you're going to disturb wetlands?
There is some proposed disturbance of the wetland, yes.
Which would be permit. We'd have to make application for permits to be allowed to do that.
Have you made those applications?
We're not in a position to do that yet.
Okay.
There's a cost involved with that. So where we're basically constrained from our ability to alter the infrastructure, when we start losing lots, the project gets closer and closer to just not being feasible at all. Because we can't recoup the expenses when we lose these lots. If we get down to 11, the project is, may financially just be a bust. So that's a problem. That's a practical difficulty that we have because of our ability to alter our infrastructure to meet a lower lot count. We just don't have that ability to do that. So basically, what occurred, what happened here was that in 1995, when the preliminary approval was granted, the lot area definition required that the net area via calculation reduced by wetlands, which is the same as today. And that slopes greater, you couldn't have greater than 20% slopes, 20% of slopes greater than 20%. So at the time in 95, when this was approved, there were slope regulations in effect. And there was the wetland regulation that's essentially the same as today. All right. So what has changed since then is that the new wetland regulation, the new slope regulations that went into effect in 2011, I believe, required netting out wetlands, which is the same as in 95. But you had to net out slopes, 20% of slopes between 15 and 25%, 50% of slopes between 25 and 35%, and 80% of slopes greater than 35%. So that's where we've run into a problem. There is one other requirement in the definition that requires that the 80% of the gross minimum area must have slopes of less than 15%. And we do meet that for 14 lots. So based on, I think that's an important factor. 80% of this property, of the net minimum, the net minimum property, I'm sorry, the gross minimum area is going to be, have slopes of less than 15%. Did you want to add something?
I think you've got the wrong number on that. Basically, we are not, we are meeting it on five lots. We're not meeting it on 10.
I don't think they're picking you up on the mic, so could you?
Yep, so turn your mic on.
Or could you speak into it a little more thoroughly?
No, it's the total area, John. Just, I'll read. Let me just read it so I'm not... Okay, so in the lot area definition in the code, there's Sections 1, 2, and 3. Section 3 says, "In addition to the above, an area of at least 80% of the gross minimum lot area requirement in the applicable zone shall be contained in land with slopes of less than 15%." I believe we meet that. If you go to the very last page of our application, this is where we talked about this. We have just about 494,000 square feet of slopes under 15%. 80% of that is 348,000, oh, 348 per lot.
We made it overall for an average of the lots.
Right.
We do not meet it on each individual lot.
You're not required to under this section, at least the way I read it. So there's a lot here. I apologize if it's a little scattered, but there's a lot here. So if you look at our application, there is, I think the last 16 pages are the net lot area calculations for each lot. And I did compile that into a chart instead of having to go through each page. I could provide you with the chart now if you'd like to look at it. It's easier than going through each page.
We got it.
Does that the chart's on the, that's this chart here, right?
I'm okay looking at each page.
Okay. So...
That's the chart that's on the rendering there?
Well, I guess it is, but I did my own here. And the reason I did my own is because for a procedural reason. I talked to Mike, Mr. Donnelly, this afternoon. We specifically asked for variance from the slope regulations. When I got into looking at this, part of the problem we have in meeting the net lot area is that is also based on deductions because of wetlands.
Did you deduct anything else besides wetland slope? Did it like easements or?
You're only required to, you're only required to deduct wetlands and slopes.
Right, no, I'm just asking if you...
No, that's all we did.
Okay, okay. Could you clarify something for me? You just said that the compliance with the 80% of the lot area with the slopes that are less than 15%. You said you felt that you met that requirement?
My reading of the code, we met it. It's not based on an individual, it's not based on individual lots. It's just based on the total gross area of the project, the way I read it.
Because if you look at, if you look at each lot and you look at each one and say, "Yes, it meets it," or "No, it doesn't," you have 73% of them that do not meet it. So even if it's an overall, that's 73% of your lots that do not meet that requirement.
Well, listen, I mean, I'll read it. Okay, if you, listen, I read it as, I read it in gross. If you read it on a per-lot basis, then we don't meet it. You're absolutely right. So I'm not sure.
If you would look at the last page of tabulations that has for all of the lots, you'll see that there is a number here indicating 100% total, another one indicating 80% total. And what this would indicate is that overall, we would meet it for all of the lots combined.
Jay, read the language again, please.
Okay, number 3. "In addition to the above, an area of at least 80% of the gross minimum lot area requirement in the applicable zone shall be contained in land with slopes of less than 15%."
This is in the subdivision regulations or the zoning chapter?
Zoning. This is in the definitions in the zoning. So the way I read this was that you take your total gross minimum and you compute how much of the total gross minimum has slopes of less than 15%. And essentially, the way I read it was it looks like it's meant to protect for the overall, you know, you look at your entire project and if you've got slopes, you have to show that it's a relatively, you know, a majority of the property is, has slopes of less than 15%. And I, so the way I read it was you take the total gross area and if you show that 80% of that total, I'm sorry, gross minimum, if you show that the total of the gross minimum for all of your lots has slopes of 15% or less, then you're in compliance. I don't know if the planning boards applied this before.
Well, I'll look at the code and look at that definition in the context of both the subdivision regulations and the zoning chapter and provide the board with my opinion.
I can also ask Gary if that helps. I mean, Gary might have an opinion on it too. All right, so I'll ask about that.
We can ask the planning board engineer or attorney or Gary what position the town has taken in the past, although it's the final say is for this board.
That's fine. Okay. That's how I got to, that's how I got to that conclusion.
Jay, you had said that the wetland regulations were in effect in 1995 when the subdivision was approved and that you satisfied those net reductions. Yet in the chart, you have lots here that have wetland deductions, particularly, say, Lot 9. That just that wetland would make that lot unapproved.
I don't know. They're federal wetlands. I don't know if they changed over time. But I'll tell you where I got this from. This was attached to a memo from Dennis Lindsay, the planning board engineer. And it's a copy of the definition effective 10/25/94. And paragraph 2 says, "For residential subdivisions created after 1987, you deduct the total horizontal area between lot lines but excluding town or state designated wetlands." Maybe that didn't include federal.
Well, I guess the point is that you don't meet it today and therefore your variance application must include a variance from the wetland deduction as well, even though you may have met it at the time of origin.
That's what we talked about. So from a procedural point of view, I think I need to amend our application. And it would include, basically read that we're looking for a variance to, from the wetlands and the slope constraints. I apologize for missing that one I originally put in the application. So I can either do that in writing. I'm going to ask that this matter be adjourned. There's a lot of stuff here and there's probably stuff I...
Why don't you also include a request, if necessary, for relief from the 80% of less than 15% slopes in case the interpretation of the board is otherwise?
That's fine. You want me to do that in writing, Mike?
Yeah, would you please?
That's fine.
And then we can change, republish our notice for the April meeting.
Will that be clarified for us? I still don't understand whether it's overall or individual lot.
I'm going to have to give you an opinion letter. That's why I'm suggesting to Jay, he apply for that variance in case my advice to you and your conclusion is that he also needs relief from that section. So we don't have to go yet another month.
Excuse me. Do you also think it would be appropriate that at that meeting Dennis would be here or another engineering?
Under the village law provisions, you do have authority to call upon the village engineer to give you advice. I can ask him for written advice in the first instance, but if you'd like him here, I'll see if he's available.
There's enough complexity that I would recommend to the chair that you consider bringing Dennis.
Because if we have a question and he's not here, then we would just have to post. I would rather him be here. Yeah. We can do that.
I'll also, I didn't include his memo, but I'll include that as an additional submission for the board, so.
I'll contact Dennis and advise him of the issues and ask him to be present at the April meeting.
We tried to put together an analysis for, as to what the road is going to cost over time. John thought he had to go out into the field to get a good estimate and the weather has just not really been that cooperative for that effect. So I think to the extent it may be relevant as to, you know, what effect that road system's going to have on the cost of building this thing out, whether it's 11 lots or 14 lots. I'll get you information on that to try to prove out that it's really a killer to lose three lots on this thing, so.
Joe?
Just one thing. I was going through the minutes from the December planning board meeting and Dennis Lindsay did have a question on the calculations. Now, he spoke generally and it, of course, makes sense to him in context, but just from the minutes. So would you please clarify if all the calculations are correct according to what Dennis wanted to see? You, I believe, talked to this as well.
I believe we've performed a method of gain calculations the way Dennis was looking for them. If the board has no objection, I'd like to meet with Dennis. I can review them with him. That way it'd be much more productive when we're back in front of you. We do have, I should point out, the applicant has provided an escrow fund that was placed originally with the planning board. So there is funding and things to make sure that your consultant is being paid and things.
Dennis gave me some indication after the planning board meeting that he'd be happy to go over what we've submitted.
So you're consenting to use that existing escrow to cover the cost of Dennis attending the zoning board meeting?
That's, I don't have, yes.
Clarify the calculations, please.
Sure.
Right.
We'll consent to that.
With Mr. Locke.
And I would see no reason why we would not want Dennis to meet with Mr. Locke in advance. So we're not here doing mathematics when we get to the meeting.
I'll get ahold of Mr. Lindsay and arrange to meet with him.
So the numbers we submitted in terms of wetlands reductions and slope reductions from the gross to get to the net minimum, the gross minimum area, we believe are accurate. And we'll just, we'll check with Dennis as to whether there's anything else that he wants to see on it, so. Just, I went back and looked at in 90, in 2011, the village adopted its present comprehensive plan. And there was a statement, and I didn't bring it tonight. I printed it, but I walked out without it. There was a statement in the comprehensive plan answering a question as to whether or not certain projects were going to be grandfathered when the new zoning was issued in, oh, you have the whole thing? I'd have to find it. Do you know where it is? There was a, one of the questions in the scope, I believe the scoping for, no, under, no, one of the questions was whether anything was going to be.
They indicated anything that had gone to preliminary or had substantial investment in terms of design and things would be grandfathered in.
Well, if that's true, you can withdraw your application.
It didn't, it didn't show up in zoning.
Right. But it is in your comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan did say that any project that had received preliminary and a neg deck under seeker will be grandfathered. It didn't say maybe or will be considered. It said will be.
You should address that to the village board and ask them whether they're willing to allow it.
The law on question was changed in 2016.
I don't know when this provision came in.
March 24th, 2016 it was adopted.
There was an additional zoning, a whole new zone plan? Okay, we'll check that. But I will say that in the comp, I don't think there's been a new comp plan, though. Okay.
I don't think so.
In the comprehensive plan, it wasn't recommended, it said, the answer was it shall be. It didn't, I can't argue that we've acquired any kind of vested rights on it except that I can tell you there was discussion that projects would be grandfathered at that point. So I just wanted to point that out. I'll get a copy of... I'll get a copy of that. I don't believe, I believe the new zoning in two thousand and sixteen was not based on an updated master plan or a comprehensive plan, so.
So now are we going to do like a whole new public hearing?
Well, I think you should hear from the members of the public that wish to be here tonight, but we'll need to continue it, yes.
Is it going to be continued or are we going to open up a new one as a?
I think we can continue it, but I would suggest that we republish the notice because it's going to include additional items for relief. Because some people may have stayed at home not thinking wetlands was an issue, but they were going to come.
Oh, I agree.
So I think we should renotice it and continue it.
Mike, the issue of documented, potentially documented grandfathering, that's not an "oh, and by the way," that's a big deal.
I think it is, but it's not for this board. If they were grandfathered, they were grandfathered. If it was an oversight that the zoning law didn't accomplish that, they should take that up with the village board.
Well, if it were, if you could, if somebody could document, verify that it was in fact grandfathered, to your point, they wouldn't need to be here at all.
They wouldn't need to be here, right.
Should that not be dug up?
Well, don't you think it's up to the applicant to do that?
I'm being completely transparent here. I looked at the code, I did not find any grandfathering language in there.
Well, maybe there was a village board resolution. I think you should just check further.
That would be nice.
But until, until the application is withdrawn, if they find out that they have been grandfathered, you should continue to process it.
All right, so you.
Actually, that's the first thing I looked for.
So you plan to submit an amended application?
We'll amend the application to make sure it meets our purposes. We'll try to meet with Dennis between now and before the end of the month so that if we, he wants anything else or he spots anything else, we can get it in before the deadline and it would be included. So we'll reach out to Dennis tomorrow.
Okay.
And, so basically, that's where we are. I will note, I went through the criteria for an area variance in my application. We bought it in two thousand, that's an interesting question from Mr. Abrams on whether, I'm assuming you were going to whether we were self-created or not.
Exactly.
So we had, the preliminary approval becomes, becomes, was basically, we're only here because the preliminary approval basically was modified, may have become annulity because of a change in the zoning law. And when we, my client bought it, that preliminary approval was still in effect. And I would argue that to the extent that we bought this property with an existing preliminary approval, it really wasn't self-created. It was the change in zoning in, I believe, two thousand and eleven that wiped out or made or affected provisions of the nineteen ninety-five preliminary.
Well, the board will consider that, but it would be helpful if you provide to us both the date of your client's purchase of the land and a specification as to whether it was the two thousand and eleven or two thousand and sixteen modifications which created the noncompliance.
It was the two thousand and eleven, unless there was an earlier one. The earliest one I, the latest, earliest one I saw was two thousand and eleven.
And that changed the net lot area to your detriment?
Correct.
And you purchased in what year?
The deed was recorded twelve twenty two thousand and sixteen.
Well, Mike, your, your point is well taken. Should the applicant not provide a timeline of these as evidence that, of what you're saying?
You want to tie it up in terms of ownership? Or you want a narrative?
Well, I think the important ones are the date of the subdivision approval. We know that's nineteen ninety-five. We know it's been extended continuously since and is still in effect. That this applicant came into title in December of two thousand and sixteen and that there were changes to the code in two thousand and eleven and at some point in two thousand and sixteen, it would be helpful to know the month. And one or the other of those changes changed the net lot area definition in a fashion that makes this subdivision no longer conforming. If, in fact, the two thousand and sixteen law predated the December title, then for the purpose of your factual outline, in either event, the code was, the current code was in existence on the date of purchase. Jay's other argument, though, is that because they purchased it with a preliminary approval, they assumed, correctly or not, that their right to construct it under the approval from nineteen ninety-five was still alive. But that's for you to consider, but I think you want to have the factual outline before you.
Didn't Rick Golden have this discussion with you at the planning board meeting?
About?
He said, and I'm quoting from the minutes, vested rights do not apply in this circumstance for many reasons, and he had a little bit more to say about that, that he wasn't going to go into detail at the time, and that, yes, the applicant must comply with the present zoning.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, that's why we're here. That's why we're asking for, I'm not, I'm not.
Sounds like you're saying that the present zoning doesn't apply.
I was only, no, I wasn't arguing for vested rights, I was arguing as to.
No, I'm talking about the present zoning applying.
I think what Jay is saying is, is on the one factor that self-created hardship, he wants to show to you, which is not fatal to the application because it's not a use for it. He's trying to argue that this hardship was not created because the applicant believed that its approval was still good. He concedes now that it is not.
That's why we're here. We're asking for area variance, it's not an interpretation. So, and it wasn't arguing for vested, my comment wasn't for arguing vested rights, it was arguing in the context of the self-created hardship provision, and those are two different things, at least in my mind, so. Does that make it clearer than, clearer than mud?
Ready to hear from the audience?
Anyone else on the board have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
If there's any other concerns, well, I guess we'll listen to the public and then I, I'm going to ask the board if there's anything else you specifically want us to address when we come back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the second row, first row, who needs to speak to this application? Next row?
I'll say, I'll say you.
Okay. Please state your name again.
John, J O H N, Prickto, P R I C C O E, off Cleveland Street. So, I mean, I think this is a fool's errand. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a geologist, but this is basically a heavily wooded, steeply graded ravine is the best way I could describe it. I'm sure there's water at the bottom because this little road pretty much encircles a crater, so it doesn't strike you when you see it as somewhere where, you know, it would be possible to build, but, you know, modern technology, I guess, can do it. I don't see why the town would, well, obviously, it seems to me the applicant has come a little unprepared as well. I mean, if he bought the thing in two thousand and sixteen, it sounds, I'm pretty sure you're going to find that the two thousand and sixteen change of the law applies. I don't see why the town or this board should bend over backwards to grant the variance. I mean, it's, we don't owe this, it's, it's just, it's just not, it's not, obviously not, obviously I have a vested interest, I can see, you know, it's a view out of my back window, but beyond that, I just don't see why anyone would want to do this. It's obviously a habitat for wildlife, it's obviously a wetland, that's obviously going to be a problem. You can, you can just guess that it's a wetland just by the, by the contours of the land. So I'm just, that's all I really want to say. I mean, obviously, they, they bought the land, they have a right to build on it under the variances and the laws and the zoning that we have, but I really don't see why we should be going out of our way to, you know, accommodate this, this variance, just because it's, 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 it just doesn't even make any sense to me. That's all I can say. And basically, that's all I want to say on that. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Anyone in the next row? Next to last row?
Hi, my name is Ralph Fago, I live at fifteen Van Buren Court, which abuts the property. It sounds to me like, given the history of the zoning, including the two thousand and sixteen purchase, it sounds like the applicant may have overpaid for the property and they're looking now to recoup some of their funds by asking you to change the zoning. And it just seems like he should be responsible for, for his business risk at offering the, making his offer too high, and they're looking now to ask you to change the zoning because their roadway cannot be a profitable configuration for the, for the, for the lot subdivision. So I think that should be their problem and not the problem of the adjoining properties or for the, for the zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the last row? Oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Donna Washburn and I've lived, I live at Twelve Hill Avenue, I've lived there since nineteen eighty-six. And I see some of my neighbors here. We were here back in nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-five over the same property. And we've studied and some of us couldn't be here tonight because of illness and they'd like to be here. And I have to agree with, like, the newcomer, John, those things, I, you know, I missed somewhere along the line why, there's a lot of math around here tonight, I'm very confused, how the slopes were changed, the eighty percent or that degree. I have to believe that whoever put that into our zoning had a reason for that, you know, and that why, and it seems to me that if we're going to change that or negate that just because it's not cost-effective for the person who bought the property without due diligence or, or just taking a chance, taking a risk, that that's not our job, you know, that we, we have these rules and laws for the good of the community and that happens to be one. And so, thank you for listening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Paul Drumgoel, my wife Sharon, we live eight Fillmore Court. So where like, right next to us, the land that's not ours is, is like a swamp. I mean, so like John mentioned, like, in terms of building, our house is literally like sinking, it's extremely wet. So like my concern, first of all, is, you know, I get an enormous amount of runoff from, from the woods where the development would be and that, that forms that swamp and there's like a little stream going through my backyard and, and I get a lot of the water already in my, in my yard and so my concern is, you know, if, if the, there's this variance and that means more lots, that means more trees down and more erosion and, and I'm just concerned the effect that's, that's, if it's already not draining now from, from the area next to me. I mean, sometimes in the spring, you can literally sink up to your knee in, in that area. So I don't know why if there's already going to be an application to work around the wetlands, why in addition we, we give a variance to let them build more lots since there's already the concern about the wetlands. And so I was wondering, is that something that has to be done, like an environmental study before that? Like, I don't, I don't know what goes into the wetland variance.
I would go back to planning board.
Yeah, this was subject to environmental review at the planning board level and they're still the lead agency, but we could request them to do a supplemental study if that was warranted, but we need to hear from the engineer first.
And just the other thing, I mean, I know, I'm sure it's all been approved and everything, I'm just curious, because, because Fillmore Court's a cul-de-sac, like, how is it that you can then build a, a road off a cul-de-sac? That's, is that norm? Like, I, when we bought the house, I never would have thought, like, we would have a new road coming in.
It's common at the planning board to anticipate potential future development and to make provision for connecting roads that result in closure of cul-de-sacs or extensions out of them.
Okay.
It's in the subdivision regulations and is encouraged.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Wait, I think the lone lady would like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just, I thought that the comprehensive planning was before the date that they had talked about, two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen. Can someone look into the history of the comprehensive plan and look at the recommendations that they had discussed and why those were recommended? Because they recommended, I think, less houses than they're proposing now, but what was the reason for that? Is there someone who can, who was on the original comprehensive planning board talk about what, what decisions were made and why those decisions were made? That's all.
Thank you. Did you want to say something, sir? Oh, okay. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we continue the public hearing to April eleventh.
My second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right. Just keep that in mind, April eleventh.
The public hearing will be continued.
And hopefully it won't snow.
No, I think just that what we agreed to was for the amended application.
I like that.
All right, thank you. All right. We have no building inspectors report, so we'll be deliberating on the closed public hearings.
No worse than him. No worse than you.
It's the same as when you tell the officer, "I'm sorry, I was speeding," and he says, "I can stop you for speeding."
Have a good night.
It is really past my bedtime. You know that, don't you?
Mine too.
You have the right to speak as a citizen.
We going to critique those two?
What was that?
Don't we have to critique those two?
You don't lose your right.
We have to do, we have to do, to the public hearing.
How does he go to sleep at nine, you know?
And he's like a clock.
Me too.
Like a clock. But he gets, he gets up at night.
What's going on? I haven't been so bad about it. I'm going to, I'm going to try.
Take care now.
Bye-bye. All right. Highland Lakes Estates, the offense, the, the fence, the fence, all right, what are we going to do here?
I don't think, I think that they, I don't think they need a variance for the fence.
If we agree that that's in a rear yard, you know, it, it's, it may not be the rear of the property, but if you look at where the.
It's the rear of all the houses.
Yes, it is. It's the, it's the rear of all the houses. I drove in every street that's on this map that they gave us and I, and it's wood, it's heavily wooded. I don't know where exactly the fence will be.
If that's your conclusion, then your decision should say that you do consider this a rear yard for that reason. And secondly, that an HOA has the same right to apply for a fence permit as does an individual, corporation, or partnership, and the six-foot limit is not exceeded, therefore no variance is required.
I mean, we don't really know what, what's going on up there as far as trespassers and.
No, no. I, I did ask, you know, when I was driving through, I spoke to someone who lived on, what's the?
I can't read.
Whatever, that's the name.
Dartmouth.
Dartmouth, yes, Dartmouth. He didn't know anything about trespasses, but.
But I think it's all rear yard of the properties.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at that map, it's, there isn't one house that faces, you know, the suburb.
I think, I think it's important to document Mike's position when I asked the question, why, why do you conclude that it's a side yard, rear yard, whatever it may be? And he issued an opinion and I think that our, the notes of our decision should include that.
Well, I think they will.
I think it's your call, but.
That clearly affects, for me, that affects the, the things you're talking about, the decisions based on the things you're talking about, so.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And I think.
I mean, I don't think we even need to do the questions, I don't think, I don't think they need a variance.
No, it's in. No, it's an interpretation, really, is you're not going to grant a variance, so you don't need the five factors. You're going to interpret the code as I hear it. Number one, to say that no variance is required because it is a rear yard, and it is a rear yard because it, although it's HOA property, it is along the rear yard of all of the affected, you know, homes in the area.
Yes.
And, and any other issues as to whether or not the fence is allowed to be constructed under the HOA bylaws is a private issue for individual homeowners to sort out. Because the applicant could very easily put up a six-foot fence at their own property line.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't see, I don't, I don't see why we should just.
Which I think would look a lot worse. You have everybody put up a different six-foot fence.
They just don't want me to be able to jump over it.
That's what it is. You're going to have to go in through Ridge Road.
So should I make that like a motion that we?
Draft a decision?
Yeah.
In favor?
Unless, unless these guys have something to.
I'll bring the decision next month. Well, the mo, the motion would be of interpretation, not against.
Right.
And I'll prepare a decision for your next meeting along the lines you've just discussed.
Okay.
That way you have a chance to look at it and make sure the language is something you're comfortable with.
There's just one thing, and it comes out of the last thing that we just did. On the map that we got for Woodview, it did show a fifty-foot easement going in that direction from the end of Hill Avenue where they, they pushed the snow. Now, that doesn't do anything as far as.
If they interfere with, with an easement, that's a private issue. All, all we're deciding is whether or not Gary is permitted to review and ultimately, issue the fence permit. They got the sixteen-foot gate, so.
No problem.
So we'll have, yeah, we'll have Mike.
Not going to vote on that, right?
No, I don't think so, because it's not a vote. I mean, we don't need to have.
You're directed me to prepare a decision consistent with your discussion this evening, and I'll have it for you at the next meeting. I think so.
All right. All right, the, the next one is the, I wrote down this pronunciation.
Okay, here we go.
Fence on Troutbrook.
Good night.
Kooachik. Kooachik.
Karen, maybe I should reiterate my thought on that, that I believe.
On which one are we talking?
Sorry, your thought? Funny. I thought, I thought it was the next one on our list.
Yeah, oh, you sneaky, you couldn't say it, right?
It's easier to get over a four-foot fence than to say the name.
Well, since you put it that way. My, 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 my opinion on that is, is that the board should make a decision to grant or not grant based on standard construction such as the terms, quote, chain-link fence. I don't think the board ought to get into dealing with, as, the way I put it was decoration. But whether you want to, I, I don't care what the material is. I don't care whether it's illuminated or not. I just think that we ought to consider the granting of a chain-link fence and not add any further language regarding how it's decorated, colored.
You're on thirty-two now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The problem, the only.
What did you?
Wait a minute.
You thought we were stopped.
Maybe we ought to agree on which, which application we're discussing. The only issue with that, Gary, is as other members have brought forward, there's also a prohibition on solid fences in the front yard, or at least a limitation on the amount of the fence that can be solid.
Right, but what I'm saying is the applicant, the language that the applicant put in there was chain-link fence.
But they showed you a picture with an opaque barrier.
Solid chain-link fence, though.
Okay, well, I.
A thing of being non, you know, opaque.
But I, and I, I agree that we should, that it's okay to use terminology like fifty percent visi, visibility, whatever it may be. I'm, all I'm suggesting is that we stay away from adding language into the approval that talks, that speaks to decoration.
The nature of the material.
And.
No ugly fences allowed.
I just don't, I, I don't think it's a good idea that we get into architectural review of.
I agree.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, but there is one problem, though, I didn't speak to when we were doing this, and that is Troutbrook Road, to the best of my knowledge, is a county road, right? So when that goes in on a two thirty-nine, the fence that, if, if we allow them to build a fence, it has to be agreeable to kind of what Orange County is going to be thinking. Because if you're coming down Troutbrook Road from Route thirty-two, you're approaching a driveway, you can't see if there's somebody coming from the other direction. I mean, there has to be a reason for having it so you can see.
But that's put there, where their wood pile is and where the fence is going to be is pretty well set.
No, I'm not worried about the wood pile. The wood pile is, that's perpendicular to Route thirty-two. I'm talking about the front yard fence. That is parallel to Troutbrook. Troutbrook is a county road. Nobody's going to be coming out where the wood is, but they would be coming out of the driveway. And this fence goes right up to the edge of the gate, if I, I'm reading it correctly.
If that, if it's a county road, the county will have to report. Did they send us a report on this one?
No, we haven't gotten.
No, we just got.
You can't act until they do, but you can continue to discuss it.
I'm not sure what you're saying there, Joe. Where, when, when they're coming out of their drive, when they're coming out of their driveway.
What I'm saying is, I, I really would rather that it, it was, it was to code as far as what a front yard fence should be as far as visibility is concerned.
So you're saying you would only want a semi-solid?
If that's what the code says is allowable.
Right, fifty percent.
Yeah.
Fifty percent in front.
Yes. I, I.
You would not be in favor of any opaqueness to the fence.
Artificial hedge look all the way across to that because I think it's going to create problems in a lot of ways.
Yeah, but if you look here, though.
Right.
The driveway is, goes way past the property line.
Now, now you lost me there.
Here's the property line. And here's where the driveway meets Troutbrook.
You're saying it's not on the road, it's going off the road.
Yeah, here's the fence here.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
And here's where Troutbrook is.
It's not, it's not going this way. You know, it's not going across here.
It ends at the driveway? Because of all this, I don't know what this even is.
How much is that distance, though?
Eighteen feet.
I'd still rather go to fifty percent on the front.
Well, no.
From my perspective.
I have no problem with fifty percent. I mean, fifty percent's better than ninety.
And it ends here.
And it's consistent.
So I think what Kevin is saying is it never gets close to the road.
They can move a little bit of the chain link, and then they can fill in this section, and it's still only fifty percent.
I think that was Kevin's point.
Yes, again, the security issue is solid.
I know.
By the fence.
From the parking that goes on down in that one area, yes. Because you can walk around the other side and still get into it, but.
Whether it's solid or not. Sorry, Karen, we were having our own little.
No, that's all right. We, we were looking at the map to, to see.
No, I don't think you're going, we're not going to have a, a visibility issue.
No, I don't think so either because of the way that it's configured on the corner there. It's not around the corner. It's, it's in, you know, it's.
But I have no problem with the, with the six-foot fence in the front. But I, I, I think we should try to stay with the fifty percent.
On the front.
Yeah, and how they design that is up to them. And Gary.
Yes, yes, it's up to, right. I agree with that.
So you're saying you agree with a six-foot fence as long as it isn't solid?
In the front.
That meets, that meets the existing criteria.
Right, well, this whole thing is front and side. The only part that's in the rear is like this little section here. The, the rear of the yard is considered the back corner behind that, you know, so they'd be like, you know, this part they could technically make solids, but that would look ridiculous.
The hundred foot that goes back that's parallel to Route thirty-two, Karen?
Yeah, that, that, yeah.
You know, I just, I just want to make sure I'm comfortable not setting a precedent.
With solid.
Future. You know, the law says fifty percent.
Oh, I, I'm not arguing that at all. I'm not arguing that.
He can make that work.
Do we need, do, do they need six feet? You don't, you think? What do you think?
Four foot doesn't do anything. I'm six foot tall. I could get over that fence if I had to.
Somebody brought up the, I, I don't recall, it was Joe, but some, one of the members brought up.
It'll take about a week.
The Crosby example of how, how we approved the solid.
Exactly.
Right, but that was.
And I, again, I see the two as very different.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you know, one's like.
Yeah, yeah, very.
Very different.
Not only that, location is different, too.
But Crosby was trying to keep people from coming on his property.
That's true.
It's the same thing that these people want.
Well, there is that commonality. I agree, but.
And we allow it.
So that's why.
But it's in a commercial district. Technically, he didn't even have to come for us for a fence.
Then why did he come to us?
Because as Gary said, that's what we put.
Listen, I think being down there, out there by themselves, I have, I think the six-foot is fine. I mean, I don't think four fences, four foot is going to be effective.
Okay.
I don't know what anybody else thinks.
So, so do you want to make a motion for? So you're saying make a motion for a six-foot fence at fifty, maximum fifty percent solid?
Is it okay to use the word chain length since that was in the application?
Oh, sure.
Fifty percent, I, I'm sorry.
Well, they may change their mind, though, and do like.
But they're, no, but they were proposing a specific fence.
Yes, six-foot chain link, but with fifty percent.
Do we have to use chain link since they used chain link in their application?
Well, that's what they applied for.
Right, but they were going to put that stuff through.
You know, if you put those slots in every slot, that'll give you privacy. What you're saying is, I mean, they can use it, but no more than fifty percent can be solid material of any kind. You know, you know the metal slots that fit down in there?
I'm sorry, Mike.
You know the metal slots that fit down in it?
Yeah, yeah.
If you put every other one, you'll have protection.
Yeah.
So you want me to draft a decision to allow a chain-link fence of six feet in the front yard, but no more than fifty percent of it can be solid?
All right, Kevin, you want to make that motion for a six-foot fence?
Six-foot chain link in the front yard, no more than fifty percent solid.
Six-foot chain-link fence in the, in the areas in question, in the, specified in the application. Maximum of fif, as per code, fifty percent.
Solid.
Right.
Not, not to exceed fifty percent.
Right, as, as per code.
I'll prepare the decision that way.
I'll second and, okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Nobody, I'll second it.
My God, I should have been in bed a half hour ago. I'm going to be grumpy tomorrow.